Welcome to this special study session of the Daily City Council this Tuesday, May 28. Just briefly, a study session is a public meeting at which the city council receives information and presentations. No decisions can be made at this meeting other than to request additional information or to move a matter to a regular city council meeting. The public is encouraged to attend these meetings and to receive the presentations as well. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Good evening. This study session this evening is agendized to provide the city council an update and request direction on the development of a commercial cannabis ordinance for the establishment of all business operations in commercial cannabis in the city of Daly City. Just by way of background, on November 8th, 2016, the voters of California passed Proposition 64 to regulate and to legalize recreational marijuana. The city council, as a result of Proposition 36, adopted a temporary moratorium to establish and to gain information and study commercial cannabis land uses and business operation. The moratorium is set to expire on December 11th of 2019. The purpose of the moratorium is to provide the council with additional time to study this issue and develop regulations regarding the implementation of Prop. 36. The city council, in various study sessions as well as committee meetings, directed staff to develop regulations for commercial cannabis businesses in the city of Daly City. Tonight, there are several policy issues the city council will need to consider regarding commercial cannabis regulations, including zoning and buffer zones, permitting processes, and public safety measures. At this time, I will hand the presentation over to our city consultants, who has been our consultants essentially for the past two years in conducting workshops and meeting with various stakeholders in development of commercial cannabis industry in Daly City. Jeff Cullen and Fran Mancia from Uni Services is here and will be conducting the presentation, as well as our city staff, to provide an overview and recommendation for the council for consideration and direction on the development of cannabis regulations. I am also here as a guide for the council in the event that there are any additional questions as well.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here with you again tonight. My name is Fran Mancia of Uni Services, along with my colleague Jeff Cullen. I was just going to begin by giving a little background of some of the things that the city has already taken place, and then turn it over to Jeff to walk through some other points, and then we're certainly available for questions and answers as needed. Rose mentioned we held some community work sessions in 2008. Specifically, we had three. The first one in March, March 5th, at the War Memorial Activity Room. We had about 15 individuals, not including staff and consultants, followed by another session on the 13th at the Gellert Park Clubhouse, also about 15 attendees. And the third one at the end of March at the Bay Shore Community Center Gymnasium, which had a smaller attendance, about seven. But I think it's important to note that we were very careful to make sure we were able to have the sessions in different parts of the community, to make sure it was reflective of the entire city and input from people from all parts of the city. The workshop, we did an overview of a lot of things. I won't read all the items here, but what's the history of cannabis in California, categories and fees related to licensing, banking and cash issues, industry overviews, city resource considerations, trying to set a stage for you to, as you prepare, to make the decisions that are before you today and in previous meetings. So we had a lot of great input from the community. There was a large, quite a few people, both residents and non-residents, so there's folks from the industry as well. This is a long list, which, again, I won't go through in detail, but some of the questions, many of these would make sense to you. How do you keep cannabis out of the hands of kids and young adults? Will there be, how much revenue will be produced, et cetera, et cetera? And so that was fully vetted, and I think we've shared some of this information at previous meetings as well. So there's quite a lot of good active questions. The next slide I just want to share with you are some combined vote tabulations based on those community work sessions. We asked folks, do you oppose, strongly oppose, oppose, are you neutral, do you support or strongly support? And then you could go down the column on the left, medical cultivation, manufacturing, testing, et cetera. Similarly, the same for adult use. And what you'll see, the R means that's a, so the first one, cultivation, there were five residents who strongly opposed it, but if you go to the far right, there were 10 residents and seven non-residents who strongly support. So this is just to kind of give you a feel for how people responded at those sessions related to marijuana. But I think the key thing is the results on the tabulation really reflected how the voters in your city voted on Measure UU, the cannabis business tax. Seventy-eight percent were supportive, as you know, 21% were not. So I think that's the key point I want to make, that the communities, work sessions really reflected the vote of your community as well. So at this point, I'll just turn it over to Jeff, and I'll be available for questions in a little bit as well.
Thank you, Fran. And Mayor and council, good to be back before you again. Nice to see you as well. A lot of what we're talking about tonight and have discussed in the past is based on California state regulations that guide the permitting and regulations for cannabis industries. And we've included this slide because it talks about the 600-foot radius that the state established for schools providing instruction from kindergarten through grade 12, daycare centers, or youth centers that are in existence at the time a license is issued. And like many state regulations, immediately after the regulation is stated, there are some exceptions. And that's what B, 1, and 2 involves. And that states that, notwithstanding what's said in A, if a local jurisdiction has adopted regulations and ordinances that allow for a cannabis business to be located in a distance less than that 600-foot radius, that's okay, as long as the applicant submits a copy of a valid licenser permit from the local jurisdiction, and that local jurisdiction notifies the Bureau that the applicant is in compliance with those local regulations. And this is going to be important a little bit later in the presentation when we start talking about buffer zones and options for those buffer zones. This next slide discusses cannabis license options. And general licensing types, we've included several types here and really steps in the process that we're recommending. The first of those is a business license, and that would follow the existing business license process in place here in Daly City. So you wouldn't be reinventing the process or creating a whole new set of forms and regulations or having to hire staff to implement a new licensing process. The second step is a public safety permit. This would ensure that there's adequate safety measures in place in each type of cannabis business. The police department would administer this permit. They would conduct a background and live scan check where they take the fingerprints of each owner of a cannabis-related business and each employee, and run those through state and federal databases. They would also do a check to make sure that all of the state licensing requirements are being met and are in place for each applicant. The next step in the process involves that zoning overlay district and the establishment of buffer zones. This requires public hearings. It also considers site-specific criteria and would identify the types of businesses allowed in a particular zone or overlay district location. Alternatively, or in addition to that, you can also require conditional use permits. And in this case, the city council would need to conduct a hearing and approve each individual conditional use permit. The city always has the ability to implement a license process to meet specific needs, so you can detail those or customize those to meet specific concerns that the city may identify. And the council will approve and authorize the licensing process, whether that's based on an overlay district approach, or a conditional use permit, or a combination of those two things. They all require city council approval. Now, we spent quite a bit of time talking about sensitive land uses, and some of those are identified in state regulations, things like youth centers, schools, daycare centers. And we've explained that some of those can be accepted. The radiuses can be reduced by local ordinances. And those buffer zones can also be different for a particular type of cannabis business. In other words, you may want to have one buffer zone for retail cannabis locations. You may want to establish a different buffer zone for cultivation, or testing labs, or a manufacturing site. And buffer zones can also be different around a particular type of use or a sensitive area. So you could make them larger or more broader around particularly sensitive use or area. Most of the things we've seen across the state, the buffer zones are a little stricter for retail uses because it has a larger amount of foot traffic and customer traffic going to those locations, and people are leaving those locations with product. And so generally, I think most jurisdictions have most of their concerns about buffer zones established around those retail cannabis outlets. You also may have a specific concern about a facility like the Cow Palace, a state agricultural facility. And yes, you can design ordinances or include in your ordinances that you would maintain local oversight over special event permits for cannabis-related events at the Cow Palace. So you can retain some of that control for those types of uses, even though it's a state-operated The next two slides are versions of the buffer zone maps. And I'm going to ask staff to come up and detail a little bit more about the maps since they developed them, and they know Daly City much better than I do, and can explain the different types of uses, the streets they're near, and how they came up with the maps.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm actually going to divert to another slideshow very quickly. Yes, to discuss the maps. This slideshow also sort of goes into some detail about what potential regulations in terms of zoning the city council may care to consider tonight, giving the city staff direction, of course, for future ordinance. But essentially, we developed a couple of maps we've shared with you before. One of the maps met the strict state-mandated setbacks identified in state law, and we developed the map that was on the screen previously reflected that. And essentially, if we were to institute that map, the map would limit cannabis uses to small portions of the Mission Street corridor, near the Mission-Westlake and Mission and East Market intersections, the Cow Palace property, and some of the properties across Geneva Avenue and near Bay Shore Boulevard, as well as Ceremony Shopping Center, Westlake Shopping Center, not including South Gate Center, Skyline Plaza Shopping Center, City Heights Shopping Center, that's down on Gellert, and the shopping center at the southeast corner of Uniparacera Boulevard and Washington Street. Some small pockets along Uniparacera and Hillside Boulevard, some gasoline stations at Skyline Westmore, Hickey and Imperial Way, Uniparacera and San Pedro, Uniparacera and 88th Streets intersections. Retail sale cultivation and manufacturing could be allowed in the warehouse and distribution facilities in the Bay Shore neighborhood, for those who are familiar with that, north of McDonald Avenue. And the existing Ceremony Business Center office at 455 Hickey, that's the one right there by 280, could be used for testing only. So that's the buffer maps that are using the state mandated setback. This is a blow-up of that map, just showing, just illustrating some of the areas that I just mentioned. Again, this is the Westlake and Mission intersection, some of the properties at the intersection of San Pedro and East and West Market Street along Mission. Also on this, if we use the strict state mandated setback, that much of the area around the Civic Center, the green areas are what would not be allowed for any kind of cannabis use. And so none of the areas around the Civic Center. And we're going to come back to another map that talks about if we were to expand the buffer areas, or not expand them, but to use different parameters. This is the state-mandated buffer for the Mission Street and top-of-the-hill areas. Again, essentially, none of the properties at the top of the hill could be utilized, again, because they're in the green, if we used the strict state mandated setback. And this is the Bay Shore neighborhood, showing the Cow Palace could be used and some of the properties across the street, as well as some of the properties near Bay Shore Boulevard. This is Bay Shore Boulevard. This map actually doesn't change under either scenario, just to note that right now. So since the time that we developed those maps, we came to find that preschools and daycares could actually be excluded from the 600-foot buffer maps. And if we were to exclude schools and daycare centers with the thought that, for example, parents are dropping very small children off, and these types of uses may not cause the kind of concern that being near, say, K-8 or high schools may cause. So if we were to exclude schools and daycare centers, additional community-zoned properties on Mission Street between Crocker Avenue and Templeton Avenue would be opened up for potential cannabis uses. Commercially-zoned properties along School Street could be used, as well as some of the areas around City Hall. And in addition to this, the St. Francis Square Shopping Center would be allowed to engage in cannabis-type uses. And that's what this map shows. So again, we have some additional areas around School Street. So this in the previous map was excluded from engaging in any sort of cannabis uses, as well as the area around the Civic Center. That's the most notable thing on these map, on the Mission Street Civic Center map. So without preschools and daycare, now some of the areas sort of past the top of the hill, or at the top of the hill are now open, fronting Mission Street. So this is Mission Street. So these properties could be used for cannabis, for example, retail. And this is the Bay Shore neighborhood, and nothing changes in the Bay Shore neighborhood. We prepared a slide on what the proposed zoning ordinance regulatory framework might be. This is outlined in the staff report. We are recommending that overlay zoning districts be adopted, which would allow cannabis uses, and that a minimum size for each of the overlay zones be established. And that minimum size would be one acre. And that would exclude certain uses that are just on small parcels, isolated parcels. And we could, you know, take a look at whether one acre is too big or too small, but the concept is that there would be a minimum size of that zone. Cannabis uses could also be subject to a spatial separation requirement. For example, 500 feet, some cities use 1,000 feet, so as to avoid overconcentration of any cannabis use from another cannabis use in the same overlay zone. We've proposed that the, for a parcel to be included in the cannabis overlay district, that the majority of the parcel's frontage be within the boundary line. So the overlay districts, should the council decide to do so, would be developed by staff, and we'd bring you a map that actually showed which properties are actually included in each overlay district. But this would be the guiding principle, that 50% of the property's frontage. So Ceremony Shopping Center, for example, even though a very small portion of that property is excluded using the buffer zone map, the vast majority of its frontage is included, and so the shopping center would be included as a potential cannabis use site, a cannabis sale, retail sale site. We're also suggesting that the council, and this was discussed at a council committee meeting, consider not requiring discretionary land use entitlements of cannabis uses unless the underlying zoning district requires, say, for example, a use permit. Example of this would be a nursery operating inside a commercial zoning district. If somebody was to establish a new greenhouse, they would need to come to the planning commission and city council for a use permit, because that sort of a use, the underlying zoning requires that just for any type of greenhouse use, cannabis or non-cannabis. So that's something to consider. We would, at the outset, however, if we did go with the no discretionary land use entitlement, well, either way, as soon as we establish the overlay zones, the city staff will prepare a public hearing notices for all of the property owners within 300 feet of the boundaries of those overlay zones. So that sort of frontloads the process, so to speak, in establishing a land use regulatory framework for cannabis uses. So that's really all the input the staff has. Of course, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you, and I think I'll turn it back over to Jeff.
Maps. Yes, yes. So as you can see, some differences between Map 1, which represents the map that includes the preschools and daycare centers, and Map 2, which does not. And from your consultant's perspective, I think the second map provides greater alternative locations, greater geographic distribution opportunities, so that you're not concentrating them in particular areas of the community as much as may be a result of Map 1. It still preserves all of the same powers the city has and the city council has to establish buffer zones and deal with specific situations within those uses. One of the things we've talked about in the past, and I'd like to briefly discuss again tonight, is the types of businesses within the cannabis industry classification. We've talked a little bit about retail sales locations for cannabis. These would be dispensaries or cannabis shops. There's also delivery businesses. Some of those are already located outside of the community and deliver into Daly City. You could choose to allow those to locate within the city and deliver to the city and outside of the city. Manufacturing involves the creation of products from cannabis plants, things like edibles, vapor cartridges, salves, and ointments, just incredible diversity of products that's being developed by the industry. Those would then be transported to a distribution facility and then moved out to retail locations. You could choose to have those distribution sites within the city or not. That's an option as well. Cultivation, two types, indoor, outdoor. Based on past discussion, I think outdoor probably is not a good fit for Daly City. There's also some question about are there appropriate spaces within the city for indoor cultivation? They usually take place in warehouse-type facilities, and I believe those land uses are very limited within the city. Testing, very similar to a medical testing site. It's a laboratory. In many cases, cities place very few restrictions on this type of cannabis businesses. Can be located in industrial, commercial, or light industrial types of spaces. And then there is a category for microbusinesses, very small operations, and they can be vertically integrated as well. So you may have cultivation, manufacturing, as well as retail sales at a location. So it provides some options for small operations. The council can control the number and types of authorized businesses that you want in your community. You can choose all of these or none of these. You have complete discretion in that area. And you can establish limitations by ordinance on those businesses. And your staff talked about one of those, which is a proximity requirement or limitation. You may not want, for example, retail sales locations immediately next to each other or concentrated on a particular block or district of the city. So you may establish a regulation that requires them to be at least 500 feet away from each other. Some cities have also had similar concerns about cultivation facilities, and have established setback requirements and separation requirements for those types of uses as well. Not as frequently seen for manufacturing, testing, delivery, and distribution businesses. Public safety, critical concern and one that we work closely with the community on, as well as city staff and the council. We feel it's important to require a security plan to be submitted by each applicant and for all types of cannabis businesses. And within that process, we also feel it's very important for the police department to conduct background checks, live scan, fingerprinting process. But then there are some choices within those requirements. Do you just want to focus on the ownership of the businesses? And do the more detailed checks on the people who have a financial interest or ownership stake in the business? Or do you want to include all employees that work at those cannabis-related businesses? And we've seen both approaches used in jurisdictions across the state. And the same goes for the fingerprinting requirement. I think it's more the norm to require fingerprinting for all employees than just the principals. It's not overly burdensome to require that. And in fact, there's that requirement for individuals that work with children. And so you see the schools implementing that kind of a process as well. We've also worked with the city police department to develop a list of things for consideration within those proposed security plans. And they're listed here. I won't, you know, read through each and every one of them, but you can see it's pretty detailed. And these are designed to make sure that both the operator and the employees at the site are safe, as well as the general public, because that's the goal. No operator wants to operate in a way that's going to endanger themselves or their employees, and you certainly don't want that to happen. And you also want to make sure that the public is cared for in the process as well. And so you can see requirements all the way from security cameras to motion sensors and alarms, specifying the types of locks that have to be used, the listing of employees, backup power systems to make sure that those things operate in the event of a power outage, you know, requirements for product storage and cash transportation to secure facilities, all important considerations when looking at security plans. to secure facilities, all important considerations when looking at security plans. The administrative process is another step in this licensing and permitting system. And this involves the actual selection of the applicants that will be further considered for possible permits to operate the businesses within the city. And we try to recommend to keep this as simple as possible while still being thorough in the process. And so one of the things we've seen work effectively is to require fairly detailed applications so that you get the information, the detail from the applicant about their business and how they're going to operate it and who's going to be involved in it. But that once they've met those application requirements, they're then placed into a lottery. And this avoids a lot of challenges and questions about how did you decide to rate Business A higher than Business B? And so you say you're going to give out five permits. You draw five applicants that have met the application requirements out of a hat or a bowl or whatever you're going to use, and you work on those first five applicants first. If someone's disqualified in the process, then you draw another name out and proceed with them. Within that kind of a system, you can also incorporate some preferences or give priorities. Let's say there's an interest on the part of the community, and the city council agrees that you want to prioritize local ownership. So you can establish criteria that say if 51% of the business is owned and controlled by a resident or a resident business, then they get into the first priority pool. You can also establish a priority for applicants that come in that already control the site that they're proposing to locate their business at. This could be through a lease agreement, an ownership agreement, or an option on the property. So you can establish those kinds of criteria as well. Once the application review is complete and you've determined who you want to proceed further with in the evaluation process, then we dive into the details on the accuracy of their information. We verify control over the business site, verify the security plan, and make sure that it includes all the provisions that are required. And we do a zoning review to make sure that the business is allowed at the site that they're proposing within the zoning ordinance. Following all of those things, then we proceed to a license issuance process. We actually go out and recommend that we do a pre-operation baseline facility check. So we work with city staff to inspect the location and make sure that it meets all the state requirements, all of the local requirements. We work with your building, planning, and fire staff to do those inspections and reviews. We verify the state license and make sure that they've received it and that it's in good standing, and that they've paid all the applicable fees to the city for both the license issuance and any review costs that are incorporated in that. Once licenses have been issued and a business starts operation in the city, it's also important to incorporate compliance and enforcement provisions within your system. These include things like routine financial and compliance audits for businesses, enforcement to address noncompliant activity and public safety issues, things like infractions of the municipal code. In this case, we're recommending that the city attorney work with the police department to do that. Address community complaints. These probably would be pursued initially by the police department. Zoning enforcement or lack of compliance with those standards and requirements or conditions would be done by the planning department. And then violation of the state regulations would be a combined effort by the police and city attorney's department. We recommend that those permits be issued for an initial one-year term and then renewed annually based on successful compliance and performance by the business. And those would be reviewed and evaluated out of the finance department. The revocation process would be based on your existing business license revocation process, and that would be handled through a combination of staff from the finance, police, and city attorney's department. Appeals. If an applicant disagrees with an enforcement action, they would have the right to appeal those to an administrative appeals board. And a report of local violation to state regulatory agencies, again, would be a combined effort focused through the police department and city attorney's office. So that's been a pretty quick overview of a lot of the things that we've talked about and introduced some new versions of maps and reminded the council about the criteria we've used and the authority that you have. So we've got a fair amount of work ahead of us. And most of this is going to be accomplished by city council resolutions or an adoption of an ordinance. One of those things is the business license tax. Voters approved a ballot measure, and that authorized up to a 10% tax. Those taxes, I mentioned earlier, and fees can be varied by the business type. The tax can be imposed based on different variables, gross receipts, a minimum set amount, square footage, canopy space if it's related to cultivation, number of different things. And we'll need to go through those various approaches with the council and determine which ones are appropriate for Daly City. And then establish an initial tax rate. And we've listed some jurisdictions in the region and some of their tax rates so you can get an idea of what those neighboring jurisdictions have adopted in the way of tax rates. And I think the message here is that it's going to be someplace below 10%, probably well below 10% in order for you to be within what we're seeing within your regional market. And so at this point, we're just asking you to think about what that tax rate might be. We'd be happy at a later point to make more specific recommendations on that and to provide some additional information. Permit fees are another step in the process. You'll need to decide whether you're going to establish a permit fee or application fee that a applicant would pay when they apply for a business license permit or a cannabis permit. And those can be designed to recover staff's cost in administering the permits. And so that's a cost recovery basis type of fee. And we've provided some examples of the information that we'd need to collect from your city departments based on who would be involved in each step of the process in order to determine what those fees could be or the maximum rate that they could be. And then the council would actually establish the exact fee, which could be up to that maximum amount or as little as none. So we've listed some key action items. Additional actions, modification, or delays certainly can impact the schedule, and they have as we've gone along. The important one to remember is that there's a moratorium in place, and I think that's December 11th of 2019. That's the date that we need to work towards if we want to move forward and establish local regulations for cannabis businesses in Daly City. And so we designed some of these dates to work within that moratorium period. The next step in the process would be for us to work with your city attorney to create a cannabis code for introduction and options sometime in the July to August timeframe. And frankly, that's where a lot of the detail is going to occur, that you're going to want to spend some time carefully reviewing and looking at that ordinance, because that will determine a lot of the details about where businesses can take place and the conditions under which they can operate. Then we would pursue the zone changes in the September, October timeframe. And then we'd come back, and with the last step of the process was a resolution for adoption of the fees and taxes. And we need to establish those fees prior to the acceptance of the applications, if you're going to require fees for the applications. Tonight, what we're looking for in particular is feedback on the overlay district concept versus the conditional use permit concept. The buffer zones, either the state mandated zones or that reduced buffer zone represented in Map Two. Any concerns that you have or gaps that you see in the public safety permit review process, and any additional feedback that you want to give us on business types that you think are appropriate or not appropriate for Daly City. And at this point, I think that concludes our presentation. Both Fran and I are available for questions and hopefully answers, and look forward to working with you through the rest of the process.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation, to everyone, actually, who contributed to this. I'm sure we have some questions from the council, but let me start it off first by asking regarding the state, I guess it's outlay or buffer zone. From my understanding, you have the initial map that showed what the state requirements are for a buffer zone, but a city such as ours can go and have a more relaxed buffer zone, which removes from concern the fact that there are schools and daycare facilities that normally would have been protected by the state's mandate, but a city could decide to override that and not have them protected. I guess my question is, what is the argument as to why that is okay in the real world of things and why not, it's not so bad not having that protection? What is the argument as to why we can relax it and not fear so much that it's going to protect, or it's going to...
The jurisdictions that we've worked with, their primary concern was elementary and high school-aged children being within close proximity of retail sales outlets. They didn't want them exposed to customers who had just purchased product and were leaving those outlets where there might be an opportunity to, you know, resell the product. The difference between those school-aged children and preschool and daycare centers is that there's less opportunity for those kinds of sales to take place. And the pattern that we see is those very young children are dropped off at the site by their parents, walked into the facility, and then at the end of the time that their care is completed, the parent returns, picks up the children from the site, signs them out, and leaves the area in the company of an adult. And in the jurisdictions that we've seen that have removed those from that buffer zone overlay system, that's been the distinction that we've heard addressed. Fran and...
I think that covers it really well.
Okay. And so could you, roughly speaking, how much does that open up the terms of the volume or the space if we were to stay with the state's mandate versus opening it up to sort of not being restricted so much?
Here's Map One that shows them included. And you can see the salmon-colored parcels identified there. And that's where potential cannabis industries could be included within an overlay zone, generally. Some of those may be excluded when we get into the specifics of the overlay design and mapping, but you can see there's major areas of the city where they wouldn't have any location where they could locate.
Right. So that's all the area, the salmon-colored, is all the areas, if we were to stay with the state mandate, that's the only areas we could have?
Right. Map Two shows what additional parcels would be available if you did not include buffer zones around daycare centers and preschools. And I think as staff illustrated earlier, those are primarily around the civic center area and was it School Street?
School Street, St. Francis Square, and then a little cap's the top of the hill for the county line.
And so that, I think, really, just physically on the map there, it provides more opportunity in the central area of the city for potential business locations.
Okay. And just to ask the question, if you were to open up to a third map, what other areas could you add?
So there's lots of alternatives. We tested a few of those. I think in an earlier session, we looked at churches and banks as potential sensitive uses in the community. We drew buffer zones around churches and banks, and it excluded even more parcels. Going the other way, you could say maybe 600 feet's too much. Maybe you want to go to 500-foot buffer zones around schools and youth centers. We've seen communities do that as well. That would potentially open up a few more properties. I don't know that it would be significant, but that's another approach.
Okay. You mentioned banks. Where are we with respect to the banking laws and whether or not that has progressed in any fashion?
I'd describe it still as a work in progress. There are some credit unions in the state that are accepting cannabis industry accounts and a few banks. I'd say it's not the norm, no.
And there is legislative proposals that have gone through the state legislature around this and are circulating, but it's still too early to know where that may go. But I think most people are still looking for direction from the federal government in terms of how to address the banking issue. I think that's really the main part of it.
Okay. All right. Let me ask my council members for other questions. Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. One question I had is, you mentioned around opportunities for particularly residents and that there could be a requirement that says at least at least one owner. I mean, I don't know how other jurisdictions are doing this, and if so, how is that delineated in the process? Because, you know, if anything, if this is an opportunity for residents in our community, I'd like to see how we can prioritize.
I think the council and the community has a lot of discretion in terms of how that selection criteria and criteria are set up. So we've seen many where they weighted more heavily towards locally-owned businesses as part of the selection process. I think it's really important to treat these businesses similar to any other business that might come into the community in general. But you have some discretion. That's something we can work on with staff and the council and the community as you'd like.
Yeah, if there's any case studies that we've seen over the course of the year or so around areas that have provided that.
And many communities we've worked have made that the priority focus. So teams have come together within the business where there's local owners and they try to bring in other resources to fit that need, so there's a lot of discretion there.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It's okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for the presentation again. I do have a couple of questions. I remember when you did a prior presentation, perhaps I missed it, like about the handling of money, I remember you distinctly spoke about that the person would either wear gloves, and that if we had someone in the city who would be handling the money, taking the money in, how would that process work for Daily City, and what would be the cost of that, and what in our staff, who would be handling it? And reporting the cash, would they bring in cash? Would you mind explaining that, please? Thank you.
Really good question, and again, there's a lot of, you have a lot of discretion on how that may be done. Some cities, just to give you some examples, have it go to the finance department where regular business licenses would be issued or transacted. Most prefer to have a secure area just because of the cash, so whether it's in the police department or in a separate room. The glove issues are simply because of cash, you know, the sanitary issue. We recommend gloves. We have an entire protocol that we could provide in terms of those type of things, whether it's gloves and sanitizer, you know, wipes and things of that nature. So we could provide a lot of that, but that's an important one, focuses on safety for the employee and the community.
Yeah, because the concern is like if, if by chance, of course, it's gonna be tested, and if we had all these things in place, but there's always, you know, a risk when somebody's handling it, and be it whether it's a female, you know, with, you know, reproductive or anything else down the way, it can certainly go into the bloodstream, and that could be, that could be an issue. So that was one of the questions. Thank you for answering that. And when it comes to the outreach, I guess this would be more the city manager or whoever did the outreach. You did.
No.
Thank you. But anyway, I understand that some of the Bay Shore School District, they're having a meeting tonight, and they were never, they felt like, they didn't even know we were having a meeting, and they didn't have a chance to weigh in on what they felt in the Bay Shore or the Bay Shore School Board members as well, were not aware that this was gonna happen. As well as here, we have Marie Boswell, who was not aware, our Jefferson Elementary School District, and our High School District. So I'm sure you probably did, and maybe it went to the administrators or...
Yeah, we actually, we're not involved in the notification process, so...
Oh.
I can respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
So when we initially did this, we did do the notification process, and we actually posted it here in Daily City as well as, I believe it was even part of our newsletter. And we just posted the different areas where we were going to have workshops in regards to cannabis. So that's why you have the various areas throughout the city, which was the Bay Shore Community Center, Jamies, and the Community Center at Geller, and as well as War Memorial. So the city did do outreach in terms of establishing invitations to participate in the workshops, that's why, through the consultants.
Yeah, but I mean, they didn't have a chance to weigh in. The school board members were not informed directly.
But the members of the public for the various areas were. So we may, I can't speak to exactly who received the notification, but in terms of public noticing, it was definitely noticed for the invitations for the various areas.
Perhaps maybe the, I probably would have been, as a member of a council, would have asked if you, people would reach out because of the sensitivity of this issue. And we have a lot of pedestrians that walk through children to school, especially with our Woodrow School and other areas, even the little ones get walked more than other cities. And, and they had other nonprofits that would have liked to weigh in as well, that went to do our outreach. One is our Daily City Collaborative, I think it's called the Preventative Partnership, and they do a lot in our city as well, and they wanted to do a presentation, but then all of a sudden this showed up, and then, I think they're here tonight, so they, just so they could weigh in. It was done through the community thing, which is great, but now we're getting closer, and I didn't know if there was outreach for this particular meeting for the study session.
Right. So just so, by the way, I mean, the outreach that was done was done 2018, when we did the various workshops in regards to the establishment of the regulation. But in addition to that, we did have several study session as well as the council agenda meeting leading up to this meeting as well. So, you know, I can't speak to if notices were exactly sent out to the Bay Shore community, but it was definitely publicly noticed as well.
Okay. Thank you. And, okay, especially if it's dealing with the Bay Shore area being one of those, at the Bay Shore Senior Meeting or whatever. Okay, I have a couple more, but no, go ahead.
Do you have any questions?
Questions, but Pam, if you want to go ahead and just...
No, go ahead, I have to, thank you, thank you for asking that.
I guess, my guess, my question is, how similar or different are ordinances for liquor stores compared to cannabis? To me, I feel like it's just that the products are different, and just that the histories of both those products have been more prohibition against communities of color.
So I think there are some similarities in the licensing process. There is a state process for licensing of retail liquor sales licenses. Those are more focused, frankly, at the state level, although there is an opportunity for local governments to review those permits and to identify concerns with over-concentration of particularly retail sales outlets for liquor. I think cities were very effective in stating their concerns and desire for local control with cannabis industry uses. And we were fortunate that Prop 64 incorporated some language in it to retain those local control issues. And so comparatively, I think there's much greater opportunity for local control or total exclusion of cannabis industries in communities compared to alcoholic beverage sales.
I guess another question would be like, going off what Councilmember Beach Vaughn was talking about handling with cash, are there opportunities for community banks or local credit unions to offer electronic transactions? Because I know for sure, if I was, if I knew a person was handling cash, that's an opportunity for a stick-up right there.
I think that's a great question. That's still in the legislative process in California, a couple of bills haven't really moved along those lines. But just for illustration, some cities are utilizing carrier services to take the deposits to particular banks, so an armored truck would come to the city hall, for example, pick up the cash. But some of the legislation proposed would allow for basic transactions, deposits, withdrawals, writing of checks, you know, very basic services, to your point, to increase public safety, but that has not taken place.
And another bill would allow for electronic fund transfers or payment of fees, taxes, et cetera, to both local governments and state government. So the issue's well understood. It hasn't been totally addressed yet. There's been some gradual acceptance by the banking industry, although I'd say the majority of them are still very concerned about the federal prohibition for doing business with illegal substance businesses.
Right.
There's a process that they can go through to do business in states that have permitted it, but it's fairly detailed and complicated to comply with.
So it'll take for the federal government to shift it from a category one to, just to make that clear. Let's see, I think that's it.
Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. First of all, I'd like to thank you, gentlemen, for the outreach that you've done for our community. I was actually at one of your sessions, and it was very accommodating where everybody had a chance to speak. And as the city attorney made mention, it was publicly noticed, and we did have these meetings, so thank you so much for this. In your statement, you stated that we can create the local ordinance to relax the state mandated buffer zones, but I didn't hear if we can create in that same ordinance to increase the buffer zones.
I think the straightforward answer is yes.
I'm glad this was brought up before, because I actually brought it up, and that's dealing with faith-based and banks. And I really haven't, it would have been good to have that overlay this evening to show how more restrictive that is from one, two, and three. We, it was shown to us one time, but it would have been good to have that this evening. It's just a thought.
I think we can get that.
To include all faith-based?
All faith-based.
Because I had asked that before.
Churches and banks are on the version that I saw. I think it'll take staff a little bit of time to...
We have Buddhist temples.
Okay, it's just a thought. So I mean, this, I, we can sit here and we can debate all night, but I guess we gotta give direction to staff as to what we would like to see, so I think that would be a good item to see. This is for staff. In creating the ordinance, I would hope that staff can provide the proximity based upon the state mandated buffer zones, the proximities of each location. And also upon creating the ordinance, it would help, there are different categories such as medicinal, what's the other word for it?
Recreational.
Recreational. If we can have it charted on a map, like say, if it was top of the hill, Daily City at this location, it can qualify for both medicinal, recreational, cultivation, testing. So if we would have that on the map, I think that would help. Councilmember Manalo made mention about, I'm looking for equity here also in this process. In our detailed applications, this is for staff, I would like to see maybe if we're going to define preferences, whether you're local, whether you're an MBE, that too to start off with, okay? This is for the police department. They say a live scan and criminal check will be done. What sort of crimes will disqualify a potential candidate from having a business? Like crimes of the public morale, theft? What are we looking for? I mean, if you have the answer, Captain, that would be great, and if not, you know...
Okay, yeah, sorry, I do have a generic answer associated to what the state regulations are, and those specifically. So they're covered in Penal Code Section 667.5 and 1192.7, and they basically cover violent or serious felony convictions, felony for fraud, deceit, or embezzlement, felony conviction for use of a minor in any controlled substance transaction, or any drug trafficking, but does not necessarily include prior drug offenses.
That's a good answer. And these are for convictions, not arrest for such, because somebody could be arrested for one of these crimes, but yet convicted on a lesser offense.
Correct. Convictions.
Convictions only.
On their criminal history.
Okay. And I would assume that the principals or the owners would probably be subject to a higher degree of standard, but we could probably write this in the ordinance, than someone who is working for them.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So I have, let me see, the Department of Police, oh, complaints. I guess we will, I would depend on our police department to make sure that we catalog all complaints, to include parking, violations of time restrictions, and any violations of the vehicle or the penal code, or the health and safety code, at least that we can document those, so that as we move forward later on in the future, when they come for renewal, oh, we got this, police had to be summoned out to your place because of parking 300 times in a year, and, you know, just as long as we can document that, that would be great. Okay, I'm almost done. That's all I have for police. Gentlemen, I'm very well aware of the banking issue. This remains a crime still under federal statutes, and subsequently, the State Folders of California approved this. So I have to also, and for my colleagues to know this, if there's any financial institution, and if it's federally insured in any way, shape, or form, regardless of the transaction, whether it's done by paper, cash, or electronic, it can still be seized based upon, under federal statutes, no matter how it's conducted. State mandate, felony conviction, cannabis code, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vaughn, did you have some more questions?
Yeah, just a couple.
Go ahead.
On the mapping, would it be possible to have, I know there's a couple of facilities that borderline on Bay Shore Boulevard that are, they, someone told me, I think it's San Francisco, though, grocery outlet, and at top of the hill, I think, like right beyond there, if there's anything that's in the proximity that's like close, just like when we did the other stores, would you, would you mind including that? And I thank the Vice Mayor for including all places of worship, not just churches, because we do have Buddhist, different, in our thing, I would appreciate if all places of worship were included. We also even have a small Jewish temple.
So I think we have the map up now that includes the churches and banks.
Yeah.
And you can see some of the lighter colored salmon areas that are incorporating portions of the commercially zoned properties that were solid salmon on the other, earlier map.
So upon review, can you make sure that it also includes the Buddhist community as well?
Yeah, so let me, let me ask some, or maybe try to focus some of the remaining minutes that we have left. I think what we have to deal with and answer as a council is, you know, we can only shrink this map so much to where the will of the voters who passed this legislation is sort of not going to be, you know, complied with. I mean, I can understand, there are very good arguments about, you know, excluding this, this business, or this church, or this school, but the fact is that it is the law of the land, at least with the state of California. And if you shrink the opportunities for some of these businesses to establish themselves, I think you run in danger of just opening him up in sort of blighted areas, and that's certainly something we don't want to do either. You know, I mean, and again, I'm not making any judgments on how people perceive this law, but the truth is, we had prohibition, and we had a time in our history where alcohol was considered a bad, a bad thing to do. And that's what marijuana was considered a bad thing to do, until recently, when the voters overwhelmingly approved the legislation. So I understand our, this council clearly has an eagerness to protect people, community, respect, religion, protect our kids, but, but, you know, we shouldn't also lose sight of the fact that we have to legislate something that has come before us, and if we over-legislate, if we don't allow for what the will of the people in the state of California has passed, then we, we really don't do our state of service. So my, in my questioning, I tried to see if we can open this up as much as we can, but recognizing that we, as a council, will still have the ability to deny people in businesses, the... businesses, the locations, as we see fit. And so it doesn't mean that we, since if we are opening up the space, that we're going to automatically allow someone there. It just means that we will, we're allowed to consider and do our job of deciding in that particular location at this particular time, is it the right spot for Daly City and for the community? Which brings us to another question I have, which is the, sort of the governance of this. I guess what I'm wondering is, so how much of the decision-making process is going to be made by the council versus staff? So, for example, we need to deal with who is going to decide, let's say we have an interview process, who's going to interview the applicants? Is it going to be the council, or is it going to be a staff? Or is it going to be a sort of a committee? We also have to decide what, what is sort of important to each of us in terms of what we want to see in whatever spot we're deciding on, whether or not we want to see just a dispensary there, or we just want to see a testing site or a warehouse. But we're gonna, I would imagine we're going to have those kind of decisions that the council will make, and some of those decisions we're going to, I guess, hand over to staff. I mean, I guess what I'm asking is to Rose and City Manager, how do you envision those decisions being made?
I can respond, maybe I can add to it. So part of the recommendation is, is we're going to the council to develop a process for how that's going to be made. And initially, the framework that we're thinking of is through the business license process. And in the business license process and choosing, we can establish that criteria. So essentially, you know, on the front end, you have the council creating that process, developing that process, being a big part of that process. But then the process is now created, and then it goes to staff to process it. So it does create more objective, I wouldn't say interview process, but it does create objective criteria that you've developed at the very front end. So it takes away the council having to look at every applicant that comes before our door when you've already established that criteria initially. When the council, when the staff talks about, and our consultants talk about zoning and overlay, that's also a big public hearing that is, you know, publicly noticed, and everybody comes and the council, again, creates that criteria for zoning. So if there are specific areas that you'd like to see where you want to delineate between retail versus testing, and that's part of the zoning process and establishment. So we're here today to try to give you that recommended framework. So the work is done on the front end, and then you establish an ordinance. And the only way we can change that is the council, again, can amend the ordinance to do that. So once you create the process, the individual departments would create that criteria for the process, would obviously would have the council's input in mind as well. And I don't know if she wanted to want to add to it.
Just that, that's a very good question, and that's a big component. And that is that if the ordinance is established where you have one major hearing, public hearing, and it's all established upfront by the overlay versus requiring every business to have a use permit, which means every time a business wants to come into the city, there would be a hearing. Staff is suggesting, and obviously, we're here to get direction on what council wants, but to kind of take the bite all at once and have, have it done all at once versus piecemealing it.
I guess maybe for the consultants, I had a question about what, what does it take for, let's take, for example, a dispensary. If a dispensary wanted to open up, how much initial capital and cost would it, because I'm thinking about the fees, the, the security detail that they're going to have to come up with, the, the, I don't know, do they have to be bonded of some sort? What, what is a general figure that someone is going to have to come up with to start a business like this?
First, it's a combination of the decisions that you make regarding local fees, the application fee process, and the state's fees that have already been established. And those vary not only based on the type of business, but also on the size of those businesses. And they can, the state fees can range well over $100,000. We've seen local application fees, some of the really more detailed, complex review processes at 20,000 or more just to apply. No guarantee of receiving, receiving the permit at that point.
So you can apply, pay $20,000 and not even get?
No guarantee of receiving approval or receiving a permit, correct.
And I think that's at the discretion of councils and staff to work together, the community to set those rates that are appropriate. Some communities are just trying to cover their costs for staff and the time to get the ordinances up and running. Others are looking at it as a way to help generate some revenue. That's, those are all, it's a hard question to answer, but it's more easily defined once we have more direction in terms of how you would like to proceed.
I think the communities, I think, that have had concern about the level of fees and providing a level playing field have established their permit costs to be very similar to other business permit fees.
And just in addition, as you go through that process, we're able, able to share with you information about what other communities are charging, how they're establishing it, to give you some, some parameters and perspectives.
Oh, good. Okay, good. Do you know what Pacifica is doing?
Not at the top of my head of, wouldn't want to answer without being sure.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, this is, I think, is there anything specific you need from us?
Sorry. This is, this is a study session. We are seeking direction from the council. And this is for us to begin the drafting of the ordinance. And I'm, I'm starting at this point only because we do have a moratorium in place, and it does take time for the vetting out process. So there, there are really two components that we can start crafting, what an ordinance would look like essentially would be the ordinance itself, the permitting process, and whether or not you'd like to see how your zoning would look like, if you're thinking in the direction of an overlay. Security plan and police permitting process, I think, is ingrained in the process. We are recommending a permitting process, and the security would be established by the chief of police at that time. But the main point really is, is how you see your zoning, as if you're leading in a direction of staff creating an overlay zone, we can create it to that respect. And of course, the zoning amendments would come to the council in a separate meeting. But we can begin the process of crafting an ordinance that would have that in mind. And of course, your, your tax base and your fees would be established at a later date by resolution, but we would have a permitting process in place.
Yeah. So I, I think my view is clear, it's that I, I view my position as more of a progressive, more liberal in terms of the overlay or the, so I don't think we should, we should be as restrictive as the state mandate and that we should set our own, and that, with that in mind, I just don't think it should be as restrictive. That's my position. Can I get your?
I agree with the mayor. I think there's, it's a time where we got to end the prohibition of marijuana and cannabis use. I think there's multitudes of using it for medicinal use. And I've had friends that have suffered from cancer, that have used this as a way to heal. And I think that it's, it's also a golden time economically, you know, to bring cannabis to Daly City in a responsible and process-heavy way. So for me, I just feel like, you know, we, I think it's time.
Okay, Dr. Ryan? Who wants to go next?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Looking at kind of what we've laid out around, we're going to be able to be the ones creating the ordinances, and that's, that's what is, what we have at hand, that we have the local ordinance power to definitely be able to define what we, we see for this legislation. And so for me, I think the voters voted to pass this, and, and it was stated in, with the voters. And so for me, looking at it, I think that, you know, I, I would like to see it in a more progressive way as well. And knowing that as we move forward in crafting this ordinance, you know, many of the items that we discuss are, will be addressed, but this is, you know, the voters have spoken, and, and that's the direction I'll be moving forward with.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've always been a proponent to do what the voters ask. And it's been our job here to go about it and how to go about it, and that is to involve our constituents and the public. The state has come up with 600 feet, and I would like to say that wasn't a magic number that was pulled out of the air. Daly City is not the only city in the state of California, but 600 came from somewhere. I would need a compelling case for us to lighten those restrictions, say if we went down to 500 feet. Basically, it's telling me that it may be good for Daly City, I'm thinking in the sense of economics, but this isn't, Prop 64 wasn't for cities to make money. And economics, we were told throughout, it was not to get money. What I'm more concerned is how that's going to affect us socially. True, there are some who need medical uses for marijuana, some who just, of course, who just wants to try it, but the 600 feet didn't come by out of thin air. And to have us relax it, I'm going to need a compelling case for us to relax it. So that's my thought on it. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Dejvarin.
Well, I too like to listen to the voters, but the social well-being as well for our whole community, to take it as a whole. And even though I know that we tried to, we did our outreach and I appreciate it, and the consultants have been fantastic, and city attorney. I, I would say that 600 would be the minimum with, along with the Vice Mayor. We're a densely populated city, but we want to give people the opportunity, but make it so that, that it doesn't affect our community, like as far as the secondhand smoke and all that. But we're able to guide that. That's the good news. So I think that if we move forward, then, if we're able to do it, the city attorney will have to ask us, if we move away from the relaxing it, but we're able to look at it and change it, is that correct? Is that correct? As the mayor had expressed. Because I think it's important that we, we see this map and we see the circles and the buffer zones, but I'm sure there's going to be other things that pop up and maybe within the maps, they could put where each school is or each whatever so that we know. Maybe, maybe that will help us and craft it as we, as we move forward and get other stakeholders, I'm sure will be coming forward, and hopefully they'll have an opportunity to express themselves and what their concerns are. Because when we met with Congresswoman Spear, and she had met with the high school district, there's a big issue about the vaping and other issues with marijuana on the campuses already. So we want to make sure that our kids are safe and community is okay. But yeah, as long as we're able to craft it.
Okay, there you have it.
And just by clarification, and I appreciate the direction council has provided in the crafting of the ordinance, is the, the next step to the ordinance is the establishing to allow cannabis. And after, once we establish this, then we will be amending the zoning code, which will include the overlay and the distances, and we can address those issues through public hearing as well.
Oh, okay.
So we'll have another opportunity. But the ordinance, which I will be bringing forward for introduction sometime in July, its first reading is just the establishing, the permitting process for allowing cannabis.
Okay, so that is, yeah, we're not doing that tonight anyway, so.
No, the zoning will come in later.
So other groups can have a weigh-in. That'd be great. Thank you, thank you very much.
Anything else? Okay, this meeting's adjourned. Start in about a couple minutes, we'll start the next meeting.